Okay.
Thanks, Robert.
Okay, let's begin.
Okay, thank you, Danny, for this nice introduction. Thank you. And so, yeah, so, yeah, I was currently, I used to work at US Department of Energy's Ockidge National Lab, like fifteen years, as Daniel introduced to me. I currently work at Order Domain University in Norfolk, Virginia, in the United States. And so my topic, you can see here, is Angela Newer, okay? Isothermo utilization of in the Orlando heat energy with symmetric function. So the keywords is isothermal, right? Okay, you know, if we have a temperature gradient, of course, everybody knows how to use it. Keywords isothermal utilization. So my talk, basically, we identify there are another type of energy process, and I kind of call it as a type of B energy processes. Okay, so we identify they actually have two thermodynamically distinct type of processes naturally occurring on Earth, okay? Well, we'll give you example of it. Now, top A, such as ATP synthesis or the classic heat engine process, everybody, of course, for very familiar, yes. They apparently follow the second law very, very well, okay? So we already talked about that in the morning as well. Now, the top B process, that naturally occurring on Earth, I'm going to give you example of exemplified by these thermophilic functions with transmembrin electrostatic localized protons. Okay, well, we will talk more about this. Does not necessarily have to be constrained by the second law or into its special thermodynamic symmetric function. That's the key words here, okay? So whenever you have a symmetric process, be careful, don't apply the second law brandly. Yeah, you can do it, but if you do that, you'll miss many important things. That's my message, okay? So I'm going to just talk about how we discover this time beyond that if I tell be, okay? So now, we actually initially, I was actually not trying to looking for challenge the second law or try to, you know, discover, you know, this type B actually was discovered in a sense pretty unexpected. Like about ten years ago, even like thirty-five years ago, and when I was a PhD student, we were a very interesting, you know, the bioenergetics, you know, the Peter Mitchell's theory described how ATP is made in term of called Kami or Smart to see, right? She got no very passport. But there's a lot debate whether protons and localized, the localize, some of the observation cannot be explained by his theory. Although he got no pay pass for it, he 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 didn't get a great contribution of it. But we discovered that his theory is not entirely correct. I show you why. So now, so the thing is, actually, everybody understand was there's it's like a problem that the theory, the, you know, the textbook bioenergetic theory by proposed by Peter Mitchell cannot explain the bioenergetics. Is actually one of them a very clear example is on the eucalyptus bacteria. Now, these bacteria can grow at pH as high at ten point five, even eleven. Okay, now, so the inside of cell, you know, these people have a measure, those are the data is not serial. This is experimental measurement, okay, right? Those are the published data, okay, people measuring in the last thirty years, okay? The inside of pH is eight point two, and then in bacteria, similar to our material, we can talk about later. There are less violation systems in the membrane, so these are biological membrane. So this is a bacteria cell membrane, okay? So this is the outside, this inside the cell. The entire cell, this pH eight point two, so it's normal, just like us. Now, this bacteria have less violation system in natural laws, real defined, well-known. When use organic materials, oxide oxygen, you pumping electron and pump, you know, so the electron moment is coupled with proton pumping. This is a well-known mechanic, it's no theory, okay, it's it's a fact, basically, it's a fact, everybody knows, okay? Pumping protons out. Now, the proton is supposed to come here, drive ATP making, this called ATP synthesis, is actually a nanometer turbine. The structure as well is also getting a bit passport after we, the professor Paul Boyer at UCLA, actually, he proposed a theory, and also the people resolve the structure of it. Actually, well, you know, listen to the also gotten a bit of problem. So this process is well-known, it's like a little turbine here makes a turn, and then actually when the proton come in here and drive ATP making from ATP plus the e-organic phosphate, and then when this lower term moving, convert the mechanical energy into your ATP energy. So that's a well-known process, okay? Now, the key here is that you look here, now you suppose have proton pumping here, right? But look outside, pH is ten point five, you have very lower proton gradient, right? The you have, we have less pH proton here than inside, right? Inside pH eight point two, you have more proton in the medium, in the buck, right? So now, we use now, so these equations are in the textbook based on Peter Mitchell's, Mitchell's called proton motive force equation. Now, in short, we could PMF, okay, so the proton motive force equation, okay? So that's he define, that's in the textbook. So is the membrane potential for this bacteria one hundred eighty? That is what a different across the membrane here, okay? So is now, he has a part outside positive, he inactive, so it's a hundred, the water difference. So we we in the bioenergetics, this is called the memory potential. Now, according to initials of process is, you know, the proton concentration or the pH, the difference from outside to inside, okay? Now, outside ten point five, and you minus that two point three, right? Okay, so this fifty-nine is just a constant, you know, like RT constant, okay, right? And they're saying, you know, temperature. So if you calculate with the textbook equation, the proton motive force only forty-four milliwatts. How much you require to drive ATP making? You require four hundred seventy-eight milliwatts, so even use like three or four protons, yet not enough. So this is like, anybody knows this in the field of bioenergetics. It's like an edifying alone. You know, the textbook equation cannot explain for thirty years, people have no way to actually explain this. So like, this is a con drama, you know, this mystery happened there like in four thirty years. Then I'm coming in, so. So the idea is actually this. So basically, the textbook cannot explain energetic, how you can make ATP, you know, the bacteria grew very, very well, okay? I can tell you about more. So we, I'm coming here, you know, water, right? Is can understand as a protonic conductor for these two reasons. You know, these are water molecules, so the proton can hop like this. Okay, between among water molecules. Another way, water can act the protonic conduct, you know, water molecule turn a little bit here, that way there, and this, that, that. And in a sense, proton in liquid water. Some water behavior somewhat similar to the electrons, you know, the 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 Fermi, whatever electrons on the matter, right? Okay, they can kind of, you know, if you, if you have electrical field or something, they cannot conduct. Basically, that's why we call the protony conductor, right? Of course, water does not conduct electron though, but only to the proton, right? So this is a proper to call water as a protony conductor, of course, the insulator for electrons. Make sure that we understand that, okay, right? Now, I understand water is a protony conductor. Now, let's go back to the visit to the case here. You have water here, of course, outside the cell, right? You have protony conductor. Your membrane is insulator, okay, right? And inside of cell, you have water protony conductor. So you have a conductor, insulator, conductor. By definition, you have protonic capacitor, you got it? Now, so that what happens? The proton pumping across the maybe by the respiration, we will not go to the bulk from this protonic capacitor. This has never understood or recognized before, so we are the one first about ten years ago, that's not understanding. Because this. So this basically is a protony capacitor, similar to electric capacity, in that case, act is electro. But in this case, is a proton, protons, okay? Now, if you Google the words protony capacity, that it does not find it. Because that was I created, if you protony capacity, James, this name will popping up in the Google, okay? So so we are the first one understand that. So now, if you understand, haha, there's a layer proton here, you see that, right? This proton will be just on the liquid water, membrane interfaces are sitting there. They are still mostly vibrating, we'll talk more sorry about that. They're going to hit that thing and doing the work, right? Then you calculate this, then, as actually the whole thing making sense, you know? So but you need to modify equation because the textbook equation never talk about it, that they're not they did not, they are not aware of there's something like this going on. So what will be the correct proton motive force equations? So so that's really here. Now, remember, this is the material in proton motive force equation in the textbook. Okay, so if PMF, membranes, two points three RT, okay, fairly they constant time, the pH difference across maybe, so that's in the textbook. So so this is my modified revised proton motive force equations. Now, the first two term here, you see, this is the same. This term essentially same as that, just a different way of writing it. Remember, pH is minus log, okay, of the proton concentration, right? That's right here, okay? So this is on the proton on the piece of our side over the proton concept in the barca face, okay? And in the inside, so this, these two term identical to what in the text, but the what the the textbook equation misses this term, so that's a term I added. So here is, you know, is two points the law, RT, you know, gas constant, you know, even on the temperature. So is actually this term is the one here with the, you know, the layer for on the surface, right, electrostatic localize, I use called the localized, I use L here. So the local proton concentration on that layer protonic capacitor, okay? And over the bark face in the liquid, you know, not the same thing where that one here, okay? And it's this ratio that contributed to so-called this component, actually, later we look called the localized proton PM proton motive force, okay? So this is very important, I want you to recognize that. Now, the question is, yeah, you have, you have a same layer, what the density of this, you know? Yeah, so this is basically, we're talking about this kind, this layer is a monorail, actually. She typically will stay within one nanometer, not too far, okay? So you have a, you have a kind of population density. So I call this called a localized proton density, okay? I discover as this proton little sub L here, okay? So that's just a box, you know, just like in water, okay, in the water. So the question is, what is this? Are we able to quantitatively express this? If we know the quantity, we can, then you can calculate, you can calculate energy, right? So the proton motive force is, you know, if we time this become, you know, basically become converted to data G. I saw in the field of bioenergetic, people use proton motive force like middle words. So that's what we are, I'm going to actually convert to give us energy later, okay? It's simulation of that. Uh huh. So my idea of to try to define or to quantitative express these thing here actually came from here, so we understand the protony capacity, okay? Now, if protonic is set capacity that, you know, we should able borrow, you know, electric capacity equation to use here, right? That's the whole idea, okay, when we understand capacity, okay? So then, when you buy, basically, it bothers a well-known you know, capacity equation, right? So the concentration of the local proton, I put a zero zero here, the other means like if in a pure water system, okay? Just like ideal guess, so this stuff on simple. Not consider the salt, we'll consider the salt effect later, okay? Otherwise, human, you know, too much science, just like cannot leave this thing, so, okay? So if you, you know, idealized liquid water membrane, water system, then you will have this, you can apply this if there are memory potentials. It will be the, the, you know, the specific membrane capacitance, time your your voltage difference, you know, membrane potential call and divided by your, the thickness of that layer, about one nanometer, and then the fact that the constant, that will be your idealized localized proton concentration defined now, so that's good. But in actual biology, you can, you have a salt, right? We eat a lot of sodium, so you know about it, we have plenty of salt, you know, sodium chloride or potassium, you know? There's many thing there, okay? So we also further developed a term to call the reduction factor, it development equation to accounting for that. So make a story short to accounting that effect, we use the new local proton concentration in the presence of those non-proton catan including of this here, you know, M means like keta could be sodium, potassium, magnesium, all those are in your body or in the, you know, outside, inside a cell, okay? They can affect, they can exchange, it can be because they are proton, right? They can exchange. If we have sodium here, they can, you have a large amount of sodium, you can exchange this proton out into the baccafaces, okay? That's nearly that term for for that, okay? So when this proton exchange, you have a sodium occupied here, of course, the density of the the proton concentration will reduce, right? So that's I call that is this term basically is a reduction factor. So is actually, the effect is not summation, we figured out, is actually is a product. Like each a different for you have a sodium exchange with the proton, and you have potassium, those effects not additive, but products. Very important, okay? So that's why this little symbol here means all those terms are product together, then will be collected accounting for that. So this is very important, otherwise, you know, calculation will be all wrong. Okay, very important. So we divide, this is unique, so you can see all of it is published, okay, what it purposes is saying. Now, with that, if you know the true concentration, now you can use this into a new system. So this is the system now. So we apply this use experimental data, these are people have done this, the real experimental data, okay? So now, in the culture medium, all the non-proto can our concentration like sodium is known, three hundred minimal in the culture media, so those are experiment, okay? From, you know, it's real facts, no, no theory, okay? Sodium, potassium, no magnesium, all the evidence is known, okay? So we use a little experimental data for this culture experiment. And so I know, and another thing is, we needed to know, in order to calculate that exchange equipment concentration, we needed this called the exchange equipment constant, now, that's like was not available. So actually, talk of my, my PhD student, like five years to measure this, these two constant, okay? You know, long time, okay? So that's why, you know, we, we know this, you know, I'm serious, export this in two thousand and ten or eleven. Took like a five years, and then finally, we got this number, and then we can calculate, you know, they say, okay, this reduction factor. So so this is the case like in potassium, you see that, right? So is this fact here, for potassium is a reduction factor in this concentration, that your potassium, the reduction factor, that. And for magnesium, kind of small, equal close to mine, so the very low concentration, guys, almost to one. So the total effect is not summation, is time this all together, you have actually very significant reduction factor. Can you see that, right? Forty-four sodan, right, okay? Yeah, so that's for the culture media at pH ten point five, so we have to do each of those pHs, a culture pH separately, okay? So because this culture has still been done, the people culture, scientists of culture, these bacteria at different pHs, okay? So ten point five is a number I just show you, right? Okay, so we did, of course, this particular can also grow on seven point five, and that times the reduction factor is this, okay? So on, okay? Now, so this is the H local proton, you know, the idealized condition, we actually can use the capacitive calculator, okay? The membrane potential I mentioned experimentally, okay? These are experimental, they're all those experimental data, okay? Now, this are calculated from memory potential, so it's also in a sense from based on experiment, okay? So this are not like a proposal numbers, okay? Those are calculated factors. Now, use that, you know, calculate the real localized proton concentration, okay, right? So this to here. Now, when it, when this low class product concentration is, you know, here, then the less, I'm so hopefully, you can calculate the local proton motive force. That's the third term in my equation, okay? Now, the classic proton motive force is based on the textbook, you know, the first two terms. And the total proton motive forces is together, that's your total, you see that, right? Yeah. Now, so let's plot this out, you're making sense of it, okay? So I'm plotting this data out, now you will see it. So this work is already published in the assistant journal, okay? Now, so this access is a proton motive force, and that's the cultural medium pHs, okay? So now, the culture able to glue, this is a COW times on this access, so the COW times like it hold on the takes in the cell for making a cell division, making, you know, one become two, right? Four become, two become four, four become eight, eight become, you know, sixteen, right? The doubling time, okay? So you can see this bacteria, so the doubling time of the minute here. Now, this culture, you know, can grow from pH seven point five all the way pH about eleven here, the doubling times like below one hundred minutes, so like this sales not slow. You know, every two hours, doubles, okay, right? Very good, very, had this sale, actually, good, excellent groups. So now, when the, when the pH go higher further, and then the doubling time is significant, that can tell you go up, okay? That's what observed, those experimental observations. So you look at the, the textbook proton motive force equation, calculate the proton motive was, you know, the called a classic PMF, you see? Now, on ten, P ten point five, you see, your proton motive force is about forty-four. How much you require to make ATP for the proton, you need at is one hundred ten or twenty? So you have four together, or four together, you were able to meet a lot by four hundred, you see that, right? That's why, you know, that's why, like, for the last thirty years, nobody able to spend this, this is a totally unexplainable with the textbook equation, right? It's the last thirty years sitting there, okay? Now, when you look at that, is this also the pattern of the, of the classic proton motive force? Doesn't have any sense here, now, then the pH go are actually good down, right? And then from this point, like pH, you know, from here, you go to eleven and called the coast of twelve, you see, the proton motive was actually increased. Now, increase your sales, doubling time should be getting smaller, she not, not like bedding up, you see, that the coach should be bedding down, right? So the not only is a pursuit to value that's not able to meet, doesn't make any sense, we observe the true doubling pattern. But also the pattern of the match, you see that? That's why this, this nearly cannot explain about the textbook, because of Peter Mitchell's theory, okay, per se, okay? So now, the reason why it missed the term I discovered, is the local proton, they are here, and you calculate it, okay? You see that, that the, the missed component, the missed component actually much bigger than the classic one here, so it's not miss a small thing, miss a big component, you know, the layer of proton on the surface, you know, protonic capacity, the thing, right? So the total is these two together, that's your total, so it's way here, okay? So now, you look at this here, as pH go up, yeah, the proton motive was actually go down, the reason is when the pH go high, the, the proton concentration in the barca liquid phase go down, so the favors the proton exchange. That's why you have this, the localized proton concentration go down, so that, of course, the localized PMF component also decrease, right? So you can see here, and that's go down, but still above this mineral quite, so you can explain this, that's why this is still able to glue. But when go down, you see, they are have more difficult to double, you see? So now, matches. So the proton total program was like this go down, and the doubling time go up means grew slow, right? So now, at the first first time, this thirty years mystery have been solved in term of bioenergetics, okay? Like, why? And now, we cannot explain how the hardest bacteria can group, okay? They have to have enough energy, you can see that, because the total proton motive force is well above that, okay? So that's good. Initially, that's my only purpose, I tried to explain, you know, how this thing can grew, or how this can make ATP, right? It chats on that mystery. But now you look, I want to pay attention to here. Now, this two hundred twenty million or two hundred ten year or twenty thirty million words called the redox potential energy limit. Where this came from? Now, in our material, you know, or the bacteria, they use electron, right? For the electron, okay? Like NADH, okay, or these organic substrate. So oxide to oxygen, but that redox potential energy, amount of chemical energy available is known, it's about, closer to about so the redox potential from, for example, NADH to oxygen, you know, this whole chain is about eleven hundred milliwatts, okay? So you do what, so we know that for each electron, each electron goes through, they are pumping five protons. So eleven hundred divided by five, you know, about two hundred twenty something, right? That's this chemical energy, so that's your, like, even assuming like hundred percent efficiency. You convert all the food you eat to chemical energy, right? That should be a glass ceiling, right? Should not have a proton motive force should be high than that, right? So initially, when this about seven or eight years ago, when the first I was old, I thought maybe these my calculations, all my equations, I check everything was correct. And then I think about exactly where the energy came from, you know, these things well above the energy putting in, your chemical energy, right? Even hundred percent efficiency, you should know high than that, so this high is not a little bit, right? You know, effect of two here. And so then, suddenly, the study, I my early work in during my college years, like, that's like forty years ago, in nineteen seventy-nine and nineteen eighty, I was actually doing a student project to explore the question of whether this thermophilic kind of thermotrophic property or thermotrophic is kind of type of life is possible, that means, is it the heat energy in the environment can be used by life to making science, to do work? So actually, if I time, I will cover that, actually, I did that. And then I was, haha, this is the same, actually, I was looking for this maybe thirty, forty years ago, kind of put aside. Because all my professors, when I came to US at Cornell, my old medical professor, they all say, hey, James, you know, even I'm here cannot utilize, you know, the thermotrophic things, you know? If you want to do that, we cannot advise you. So I just learned, if you know chemistry, and you're working for the environment energy, or truck classic, you know, traditional energy. So I kind of already possess that aside, you know, all those, you know, very conventional research, and until now, I did, aha! That's a thermal thing here, it must be sermon, okay, so I carefully look. Now, so you look at that, this component, you know, the localized proton motive force, right? You remember, this is a local, you know, that, that, that one miss, okay? So is the concentration of your local proton was the one in the, in the barca faces actually contributed to your free energy, you know, this local proton motive force actually have you know, as a simple relation become a data G, right? At first, I'm going to expand that, okay? So that in a sense, the protony and motive force for this is just a, you know, you just time your fairly the constant for this on time, you cancel that one, that's it, so so clear, okay? Right? So because have, you know, it's, it's a minus, fairly the constant time, your proton motive will become a, gives free energy, so it's right there, aha! But you look at that. Now, where's heat energy come from? They're hiding right here. RT. So in this audience, I know, I think, you know, you know, the R is bosman constant times our God's number, right? You have a KT term hiding right there. So is a thermal energy, you're by equation tells here, you see? It's use this KT term, it's hiding there, in the past, we just kind of, oh, gas constant, we just take for granted, that's not any thinking very hard. So I immediately realized, this actually, now the temperature, remember? Inside the cell, outside the cell is the same. There's no temperature grading here inside outside cell. Okay? So that's really truly I saw so more. So that's why the single T. Okay. Yeah, so I go. So that's why we not understand that this deal is is the energies came from this term called the local proton motive force, I call the local protonic motive force, where I came from. Now we can also define. Um, that you find out. The entropy change that you showing here for this localized proton is can be shown by this equation here, you see, right? You divide by T here, you got that, okay? And that's actually it's a laser of the local proton over proton. Uh, the concentration in the bark face, you know, in the bark lip, okay? Uh, of the of the system basically is this your electrical uh transmitting electrostatic local protons versus a bark fist protons is related to called natural entropy change. Data is L is mathematically not defined. So now this very important. So that says that. Now, as long as you have your local protonic capacity behavior, that all biological memory actually has very important all biological, I'm talking about not only this bacteria, including a mattoconia, but a cover later. Or in the trees, in the algae, or in the trees, in the oceans, aha, in your homes, in everywhere, when you have a life, you have these things. Okay. So what happened here? Well, as long as I have this. So this will be is if this, as long as it's not zero, now if zero here, a logarithm of one becomes zero, right? Your entropy change was zero. As long as this is none zero above zero, you have a you have an active entropy change, you see that, right? So this happening. So this nearly, you know, the first time we mathematically or scientifically discovered the natural system, they have these, they are utilize this natural occurring uh natural entropy change events, they try to utilize that. Basically, taking if and down this entropy fact. Aha, able to utilize attract the energy from a symbol vibration of the protons. Okay, they usually will be net, you know, they will let them, okay? But they were if they are in a bulk, no matter they crazy does, they are not able to do the work. But if they are electrostatic in local surface, you have a high probability of hit death, right? That's really this data G, data G is for, okay? So it's nearly, it's very clear, it is the uh they are using um in one hidden actually I saw so many because temperature is you have a single T. There's no difference across memory. Okay, so often everybody not get it. So this is a part I just convert that to free energy, you know, the proton motive force uh convert to, you know, just part as the give us free energy, right? Same thing, right? You see the same pattern. Okay, so I just want to make sure that, you know, in biological, bienergy, bioenergetic is a proton motive force. But in some of dynamic, everybody here in this audience probably more familiar with this data G. So, okay, so you can see here, that's your total data G, that's a classic proton uh motive force data G, that's your local PMS free energy. So same thing, okay, right? Okay, I just make sure that clear. Now, so once I I want to pay attention, you know, so in that case, how you can over break because the glass ceiling. Now, I predict from this data. If this is a correct, if my interpretation correct, I would predict the structure. So this is a piece of biological membrane in your material, okay? You know, it's very similar to one in the bacteria, okay? But this one is like real different, everybody actually know, okay? I expect, so those are the inspiration for that, but this is some use NADH. And and um uh so electrons coming here, you know, all the way to here to go to oxygen and pump be protons. Okay, those are the proton pumps. Okay, so I expect the proton pump is the protein, you know, the exit should be like extended about one or three nanometer away from the membrane. Aha, like this one here, this one here, they should say it should sticking up into liquid. And the proton user, the mouse off it has like the ATP senses had to be stayed there, okay? Because otherwise, so they are not if this, now if this is not sticking out. Now, if they were pumping against this layer, then you're backfire. You see that, right? Okay, so this is my prediction. That's why the how can they they can break the glass ceiling? So that means this is symmetric. Remember, that's key word I discover, okay? So these two sides is not the same, okay? If symmetric, you don't have a game, you see the two side symmetric. That's the the key here, okay? You see the membrane asymmetry, blah, blah, blah. So this came from beings are evolution, you know, these are predicted exactly this now are the datas from cryogenic electron microscopic data. This is true. It's not my cartoon. It's a published here in the in this article, I dig it out. Match exactly what I predicted. So I feel very confident what we discover is real, okay? So this came from beginnings of evolution, as the you and me is in the whole many or all organism on earth has that. So that's why top two process actually is in the past, we just do not know it, we not understand that, okay? So because of time, I go learning a little fast, okay? So this part, the present study, you know, is this uh electrical transmitting electrical local pronunciate, I see any, had been better explained the decades long standing, you know, conjure can draw them, okay, you know, the mystery of ATP synthesis in effective bacteria. The calculated the PMF curve matches excellent way of observe the population groups pattern. Okay, that's just that. Now, more importantly, with also so much utilization of in my heat energy with local proton at the liquid interface to do useful work. Driving ATP synthesis, okay, it's real, okay? Yes, so it's my cat, how do chemical five to amount of heat? Now, that's the same came from, I'll just talk about, okay, right? And it's the scientifically in this audience, most interesting one is this neck the entropy happens, okay? So this first time we really kind of demo shit this. So this system also happens in uh in uh our material, okay, so I'm going to talk about that. So this new our body material, okay, so those are well resolved the structure. You have this in a man being like this called the crystal, okay? Now, the ATP synthesis is actually they locate on the tip of that. Okay, those are reviewed by cryogenic electron microscopic work. So people in the field cannot explain why they do that, you know? Why are these things localized so neatly on the tip here? We now have a theory here. So, so example, why material contribute developers a crystal? Now, I understand first off, well, the formation of crystal creating more membrane in the membrane surface area because it's a protonic capacity, right? The bigger, the more membrane surface area, you have more capacitor capacitance, you able to some more energy, right? That's what they do there, right? That's one thing. But also the study here, you know, you form this kind of structure called a crystal, you know? So you have membrane here, but you look decent here. There's another effect. For electrostatic, you have this, your proton concentration on the here, because this, you know, this is a, you have this special ship, okay? It's not wrong, okay? Crystal, actually, his concentration is high here. So although um the pump, your your proton pump, I show actually your mask which is here. So they're pumping at the lower concentration part of it, but electrostatically make it even higher. And that's why they're sitting there, they basically utilize the best way to utilize this, you know, heat energy, you see that, right? This again came from beginnings of evolution, yes, of evolution, they are natural floating. Okay, so this is another finding here, okay, this already published in the nature's uh research journal scientific reports, okay, this work. And also we calculated exchange effect for this bacteria or for our material body, okay, okay? That factor is, um, you know, the reduction factor. So we calculated from there, we calculated the material without crystal is here. With crystal, you have much more proton local proton per material. That's evolution only make that crystal formation have a demand, although you don't have to, you know, some of bacteria may not have. But the more you have, you have more protons, local proton, right? So you can use the heat energy more, you see? So evolutionarily, they're making sense. So that's another piece. So also i- in this article, we discussed that. And more important, we check the energy for material, okay, so I'm gonna because of time, the calculation similar. Okay, so I'll catch these kids, I'll calculate the data ace, okay, you know, with the membrane potential, those are experimental, okay? And these other calculate the data from the new experiment. And you see the first time in numerical demo your data is negative number, okay? First time, so is this cases a lot, okay? It's lucky, it it's this similar feature. And these are the data uh G for your local component, this is the classic, the total is this. That's your how much is needed for making ATP? That's your chemical chemical limit because all the chemical energy, see? The requirement is, you know, higher than the chemical, and you cannot and you cannot explain ATP making about it. That's basically that, yes. So that's how the part is, okay? So that's your classic in your material from memory potential in your body can from six sixty to, you know, two hundred milliwatts. And so that's your classic protonic free energy. That's how much you require. So this, um, the classic calculation really cannot explain how I'm at to contribute ATPs. Now, the local product most here way above that, that's your total. And that's the only quiet uh proton motive force. So our efficiency about fifty or sixty percent, you know, it's the day. So the system, they grab a significant more heat energy, they use, you know, they use very freely. They use very generously. It's not here, you know, so so second law in that case applies very well. So don't say second laws alone. We are not challenging the law. Yeah, so so second law only when in a free system, yeah, you do, aha. But for the member, you have a two dimensional thing, you have asymmetric, be careful, it's so second law, that does not apply, okay? So I just, that's type of B, okay? Yeah, so I already show you this. So this is, you know, symmetric thing, I just revisit, okay, I showed you before. And uh how this energy is exactly used, remember that ATP is here? This is chapters and resolve. So let's look, you know, where this chapter is, product hard you use, you know? So remember that thing, okay? So this is the result structure, you see from the science paper, okay, right? So this is structure. So that's a liquid face, okay, your water here. So the proton actually comes right here and drive this and turbine, making this and more. And you drive ATP making, okay? Where the prototype exactly getting, you see, that's your liquid face. Remember, the local proton is right, this in this layer. And they are so more vibration, remember you have a KT, right? If there's here, of course, the protons, they don't have I, they're bumping in and out. But if there, they're gonna hit the thing, right? And hit it, they will turn them on, turn this molecular turbines, make ATP, okay? And then so that could summarize this, that's how that heat is utilized, okay? So I TP theory, uh, which is newly formulated proton motive force equation cannot fully elucidate energetic is false, so called oxidative phosphor in material, okay, you know, for the whole membrane potential. This study has not review material can I so so many utilize in one heat energy with ambient temperature, I mean, that can thirty seven C, okay? Of um you the summer connect energy of the proton, okay? Of the local proton to perform useful work, drive synthesis ATP, convert heat energy, part of heat there. Of course, some of the energy came from chemical, okay, chemical energy as well. So local proton motive dominate the TMF and material could attend as much as seventy percent of the free energy from this process. So material part of including us are not only chemical, remember, we need to food, we are chemical trap, okay? But we also have a somotrophic feature. I saw so many utilize the environment heat energy, okay, to help ATP making. And here is my take home messages, okay, I'm going probably stop here. Because of time, okay, I can let you through this, okay? So basically, what this I hear is uh the key message is that this study review us a sumo tracker feature that biological membrane system can ISO similarly utilize, you know, in one heat energy associated with ambient temperature, some more motion connect energy of localized proton to perform useful work, drive ATP making. And the local proton protonic free energy from isosomal environment heat utilization with the T E L P is expected in this equation I showed earlier. It's not quite clear. There are two similar dynamics, single type of energetic process naturally occurring on earth. Type A is everybody familiar with. Type B, as example, in my talk here, that's not necessarily happy constrained by the second law or into its special somodynamic and spatial symmetric function as I show in the membrane. Association is a natural entropy change. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, James. So um let's begin with questions. I'm going to check first on participants. Okay, there are a few hands. I think. Okay, Dr. Solomon, you're up again.
A second time at bat. Basically, my question is, this is great results. And as you said, why haven't people discovered it before? I'd like to get your opinion as to why this happens. Uh, you know, like what 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 goes on in your mind, it might not be going on in their minds or constraints that they have, you don't have. But at any rate, my main question is, has any of this been applied by the neuro people to create better models of neural transmission and stuff like that? Because our our my neuro group in this area has found it to be incredibly incorrect and lackluster and old time ways of looking at the neural structures, they don't even get into the 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 sodium, potassium, calcium, magnesium, they don't get into any of that stuff as well as they should. I was wondering at your level, you have a lot of stuff there that could be used in under better understanding neural firings and transmission. And do you or any of your colleagues or follow on people have used this in their model?
Yes, thank you, Robert for your question. Yes, indeed, I already have publication on prizes funding to the NERLO. Actually, it's a friend, Albert drinking water, okay, making water protonic conductor. Uh, Robert, the signal of your brain to your lack is one null or inside the liquid. In our brain, in our bodies, there's no electronic circuit. Because the shortest, the longest circuit is a much, you know, like thirty nanometer, I cannot form a circuit. What happened? So apply this here is the the water in the, you know, no law, uh, excellent, very long, right? So like more than meter from your head. Is protonic signal. So I actually have already have publication just published about a year ago in neurophysiology, actually, I already, uh, Robert, I can send the article for, if you can send me email as uh email. So I will able to forward my article, yes. In fact, from my work, although not cover here. Our brain actually working on a protonic circuit, you know, of a neuron, all the neuron together, right? It's a the actual potential is actual protonic signal. Because this is the membrane potential, remember, is from uh is from um the protonic, you know, capacity ten signal, right? The protonic capacity, right, okay? So in a sense, we not understand our brain and our neural system, yes, all the neuro series because they always talk about sodium diffusion, they cannot explain how the conduction of a signal, they're too slow, you're deficient too slow, you know? Diffusion of sodium is like very slow, I cannot explain, you know, how you know, a paste cell in the hot works and cannot explain, I'm talking very fast, you know? My signal to my hand, that's my muscle, okay, I for deficient Norway, but protonic conditions very fast. That's why, yes, this have Robert, this has already applied into a no law physi- physiology. So I have, you know, already published that. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's let's move on.
Just a real, just a real quick comment back, if I may.
Okay, very quickly.
What we're getting out, what we would also is ignored is the fact that the water molecules are rotating. So you get order rotating water molecules, you obviously get magnetic moments and all sorts of coupling effects and whatever. And our work has shown that when you have high sodium content in a human being, very high sodium content via salty diet or whatever, that this definitely affects the nature of the rotating water molecules. And it has impact on neurological function, but the more of that perhaps some other time. That this definitely affects the nature of the rotating water molecules, and it has impact on neurological function, but the more of that perhaps some other time.
Thank you.
Good, Justin Koven.
Hi, um, uh, James. Uh, my question in regards to you were indicating that there's a, uh, there's pulling of heat from the environment. Um, so, you know, I don't know if that's an assumption. Or if you've you've had measurements of that, of actually seeing the heat coming in from the environment as this process is happening.
So um, so the heat is right here, Justin, you see the RT, right? As I pointed out, R is the uh, is the KT, bosman cause on KT times your avocado's number. N A, right? So it's right there, exactly explicitly tell you that, that's the energy you're getting from environment, is the. Is a KT is well known is a kinetic energy of the, of the, you know, of in this case is proton, you know, some more, uh, let them some more chaotic, some more motion, but. When you, that that the proton dancing along the mouth of that A T B sense, and you're gonna hit the things, how do I miss it? So it's here.
Yes, so you know, there there's a question of whether it's. Um, you know, as was mentioned by Thomas Malone earlier.
Yes.
Is that energy coming from zero point? Or is it coming from external and, uh, you know, heat from the environment, so? You're you're showing that there there's something that's occurring here, and it matches the patterns that are. You know, actually seen in the cells, you know, from a capacitor perspective, so so you see, there was some. You know, really solid stuff that seemed like you actually had experimental data behind it, but the question is. Do you have something experimentally that's actually showing that there's some heat drop from the environment? Um, you know, uh. Now, it could be you're just talking, well, just normal diffusion of heat from the environment and.
Yeah, yeah, so very good question, so this I'll go back to the when I was a student, uh, you see, the year of seventy nine eighty two. Um, at that time, you know, this me, it's forty years ago, and I was student. I I have idea, I want to explore whether, you know, the thermal traffic um. Type of um, metabolism is possible, so we actually did experiment, we use the heater. Is absorption of um, thermophilic um. Uh, bacteria, in this case, actually is this bacteria. This methodology, okay, we we enriched, you know, that's like we've done forty years of students, that's self is a great achievement. And then we put this in a reactor. We measure like this, your culture with is acetate, they fermented to um, so the organism, okay? And they uh, metabolize making method, they actually theoretically absorb heat, okay, so but we want to test it. Make sure they are really, it's true, as you said, okay? We predicted, so this control. So this lemon done, so this like a system, you have a reactor here, you can show you compare the temperature difference, so this whole thing is in a thermal box, okay? All right, so you can show that, we measure the heater um, difference, yes. They are temperature gradient, so this in Chinese, so just uh, this is temperature uh, difference, yeah, they are absorb heat, so the temperature on your treatment. Is slightly lower upon one, uh, upon one C, secondary lower than your control consistently. We repeat the four times. So we do observe the the organism in this case, in the total system, actually. Absorb heat from the environment, so thank you, Justin.
Okay. Any, any other question?
This actually, is this early exploration, actually, man, this, you know, because came up, but was the chemical energy. That's the my bell, you know, the sign I'm looking for forty years ago, saying, James, your science right in front of you. Why don't you look nice? And then, oh, my gosh, this I'm looking for like forty years ago, kind of came to me, I selected. From the data, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Garrett.
Um, so this question is really perhaps more due to my ignorance of of uh. These types of chemical processes. I see that your reaction takes more than a thermal energy, that.
Yeah.
Really proved quite clearly.
Hmm.
My question is, where does that energy come from? Because in a uh, this chemical soup, there are many sources for the energy, so can it? Can the energy be transferred from some other uh, chemical in the process to the the particular? Uh, chemical that you're measuring.
Yes, so uh, uh, Professor Ma, that's a very good question, so in these bacteria metabolism net. Actually is a bizarre heat, but in our body. We have other process, you know, like when eat a lot of food, we have oxygen, right, so this one does not use oxygen, okay? So they are, you know, kind of fermentation, there it is less heat energy, so the total actually is absorbing. But in our body, we actually, so that we still chemical trap, we eat food, we oxide, we also, you know, pumping protons. We did this a lot of heat. So so there is a mixture of the chemical, don't forget chemical job, we are, we are not so much of beer, so much of, okay? We are a mixture of the chemical of really this heat. But in the last step of the proton, the surface grab a significant engine back. So that's the reason why, you know, for one, uh, audience say, why people did not discover, because difficult, because it's a mixture. You have, you have a chemical chemical trap, you release a lot of heat, that's why I maintain at all the time thirty seven, right? Of course, we are, we are close, sometimes we we try to taking hot shower, make warm. But in overall, actually, the chemical energy from oxidation food. We still release a lot of heat energy, but we grab them back. That's why um, our efficiency, our bodies metabolism is so high. As you may related to the equation about why we are thirty seven. Why we are so difficult to lose the weight, because the energy efficient just not like the second law apply, you know, like even sixty percent or fifty percent efficiency. Yes, the chemical part, yes, but the last part, whatever, can you come back? So the total energy is like closer to like ninety percent or something, you know what I'm saying? So but it still is, you still produce heat, so we are actually in human, we because we are oxidative, we are, we are hot organisms. We make our body hot, we actually is have a lot of heat source from our oxidative process, you know, like when we pumping protons. But electron moles and also the chemical reaction, you know, provide vibrations, you know, like in the in the medium, we produce heat. So is that's why, this is, uh, that's why people, you know. Uh, was wondering why biological systems sometimes have such a high efficiency. But we try to still explain by the classic uh, way of explaining. You know, but that's why the debate, you know, so now we understand, oh, wow, you actually have two cents going, yeah, okay. Yes, thank you.
Right, well, Ja- James, to follow up on that, it. I mean, I would assume metabolic studies have been pretty rigorous over the last hundred years to try to balance. Uh, heat production, waste production, uh, CO2, water production by organisms, human beings and other animals. Against the intake of energy, and if seventy percent of energy is actually coming from the thermal bath. How does that square in your mind with metabolic studies that have been done over the last century?
Now, if you measure the total as um, uh, Garrett, just um, the question is, if you try to meet the total, you still have uh. The totals process still it is heat, so that because look, the second law is overload like a mythic, if you don't know it. I was thinking that second law still apply very well, okay, right? So what happened was, the heat that it is posed as, actually is, you know, the thermal efficiency, uh, the energy efficiency is like about fifty or sixty, even like thirty, you know, percent, you know? Depend on status, okay, depending on what status. But that that proton size fetch a lot of comeback. So your total still is not like this bacteria, this bacteria is special, okay, because they are endolobic, okay? And that's why in this bacteria, you can measure, they are the net heat absorbed, okay? But in human, we are not heat releasing. So that's why this thing is not apparent, okay? You got it, right, yeah, thank you.
Okay, I think we're just about out of time, so. Um, again, uh, James, thanks very much for a really provocative and interesting talk. Um, at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Garrett for the next speaker, I believe.
Thanks. Right, so I'm going to stop sharing, okay, good.